Good evening, everybody, and I would like to call this meeting to order. And I would like to start with a. Are we supposed to start with the Pledge of Allegiance? It's not only in the title. But where's it?
The first page.
All right, nice to get to the first page, so I'm sorry. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and our. Gail Peller is going to lead us into things.
Yes, right hand over your heart, please join me in reciting our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the republic, the United States of America, and to the great love of it for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good job, everybody. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shannon, here. Councilmember Megachuck.
Present.
Councilmember Toreng.
Here.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Here.
And Mayor Craig.
Here. Are there any changes to the orders of the day? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to announcements. Do any of our council members have an announcement that they would like to make? Seeing none, we're going to go right to our first item, which is a legislative update presented by Assemblymember Gail Peller. So thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you. I have a handout with the legislation. Should I give that to your city clerk?
Sure.
Okay.
They'll pass it down to him.
I'll give it to your audience. There is nothing. Thank you.
Yeah, this is pretty much a packed house tonight.
I love it. I love it. And they gave me pictures of all of you that I could.
Oh, wow. That the posting office scale are a little bit better.
They're better, yeah. They've got the wanted posters, yeah, okay. Well, good. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Craig and Council for giving me some time tonight to update you and the Monteserino community on my legislative and budget wins this past year. I'm proud to announce that all ten bills that I passed and I got passed and sent to the governor were signed into law. So our legislature prioritized affordability this year, and I work closely with local groups, organizations, and government agencies to help develop my legislative package every year. In fact, right now, we're working on next year's legislative package, so if you have any ideas, please get them our way. So let me just go over some of the bills that I've sent to the governor and that I want. So if you can go to the next screen and take it there. AB 414, it simplifies the security deposit return process by requiring landlords that receive security deposits or rental payments from tenants electronically to also return the remainder of the tenant's security deposit in that same manner, unless they have some other mutually agreed upon process. So a deposit's usually equal to one month's rent or more, the timing in which the remaining deposits returned is can greatly affect a tenant's ability to move between housing opportunities, so this is going to help that case. And my team and I noticed cases where home listings were photoshopped to include features like a backyard swimming pool or a fully renovated kitchen or furniture that can never realistically fit in an advertised square footage of a property that's listed online for sale. So as a response to that, I introduced AB 723 to protect consumers by requiring those images that are digitally enhanced that are used in real estate advertisements include a disclosure that the images have been altered. And the law also requires the original unaltered image to be accessible to the consumer when the altered advertisement photos or promotional materials are featured. So this actually came from my chief of staff, who has three children, and she and her husband inherited a charity farm in the Central Valley. And she got her kids together and drove down to the Central Valley to look at this beautiful home she saw online. And she gets there and that renovated beautiful kitchen with an island and marble counters and, and, you know, gorgeous, did not exist. It was just basically industrial kind of shelving and refrigerator and nothing else. So that's what prompted this idea, and now it's law. And then moving on from housing, I'm proud to have carried AB 583, which will have us join over forty other states that allow nurse practitioners to sign death certificates. Nurse practitioners are often the primary providers of care for patients before and leading up to their death. So it makes sense to allow them to manage this administrative process rather than waiting for the physician's signature, which in some cases can be weeks or days or weeks. So this actually came to me by the nurse practitioners, and when they brought this idea to me, I said, "My gosh, that's what happened to me when my father died." So my father passed away and his physician was out of town and unavailable for two weeks. So we were not able to get a signed death certificate, and as a result, we could not tend to the final, you know, process for his body, and we held his memorial service without, and his funeral without his body. So this will really help families and, and making sure that their loved ones are well taken care of. And then my bill, AB 996, establishes a voluntary early consultation process through which local governments can share drafts, get feedback, and resolve issues with the Coastal Commission before formal submission of their local coastal programs, reducing the risk of denials later on. So for context, the California Coastal Act encourages local governments within the coastal zone to develop local coastal programs to implement the Act's policies at the local level. And in 2024, all local governments in the coastal zone were required to include sea level rise plan for their LCPs and submit those for review to the Commission, and that's going to be due by January 1st, 2034. So this bill was brought to me by the City of Santa Cruz because they want to get ongoing consultation and help from the Coastal Commission, so when they submit that plan, it's not going to get rejected. So assisting local governments in meeting their state reporting requirements is one of my top priorities. And I was glad to act as a liaison between the City of Monteserino and HCD last year during the housing element approval process. And we were able to help provide some streamlined communication there then. And then helping the environment and our local small businesses, AB 1104, expands opportunities for small businesses to access renewable energy by reducing the administrative burdens for solar installations. So specifically, this law clarifies that a business owner who installs a solar project, they're not the awarding body under the Department of Industrial Relations and therefore not subject to complex public works requirements. So this is going to allow our local businesses to put on rooftop solar, maybe even share that energy over the fence with adjacent businesses and not have to undergo all the reporting requirements. And then working in collaboration with the Semper Virtus Fund, California's first land trust and an organization dedicated to exclusively protecting the redwood forests of the Santa Cruz Mountains, we were finally, third year, third times a charm, were able to pass AB 679, which streamlines the land acquisition process for three parcels that are being transferred to state parks around Big Basin, Redwoods, Anjo Nuevo and Butto State Parks. And it exempts them from this very lengthy Public Works Board process, which can take decades. Supporting that, so this will help support the recovery of the CZU fire damaged park area, ecological restoration, trail maintenance, climate resilience, wildfire prevention as well. And so this is a critical bill for that region. And as a former county elections official, I served twenty-seven plus years in Santa Cruz County as the chief elections official. And so I'm now the chair of the Assembly Elections Committee, and I was pleased to carry a number of bills this year in the election space. So one of those is AB 1072, which requires the Secretary of State in consultation with county elections officials to develop uniform standards and guidelines for a voter to correct mistakes made on a voter's ballot. So the law authorizes the Secretary of State to adopt regulations to ensure uniform application of those standards and guidelines. And then AB 1511 was a technical bill containing various minor and technical changes. We've worked on with the Fair Political Practices Commission to amend the Political Reform Act. And then AB 1512 is another technical bill, but counties always, you know, jurisdictions always struggle with this. There was a law that required if you're going to put a bond measure on the ballot, it's got to say bonds, yes, bonds, no. Seems ridiculous to have the bond word in there, just yes, no, so this bill changes it just to a yes, no option for voters. And then AB 1513 clarifies that elections code provisions relating to the recall, the trial court judge apply exclusively to superior court judges, and the law also replaces the use of registered mail with electronic or certified mail for elections-related communications. So moving on from legislation, I also want to talk about one of the budget wins that we had for this area despite a very disappointing budget year, and we're going into another one ahead of us. We were able to allocate $10 million to the Healthy School Food Pathway Program. And this is a program that provides a unique educational opportunity to support food professionals in serving and preparing healthy school meals. And the host site includes the Los Gatos Elementary School District. So outside of legislation, my, my team and I have been present in the community. We love coming to the Monteserino Annual Picnic, of course, the Los Gatos Fourth of July event. Spent some time at the New Museum of Los Gatos and their annual Art Now exhibition. We visited with the local Shabod of South San Jose. We did a home hardening workshop in Almanin Valley and do, was at the Los Gatos Seniors Recreation Resource Center Resource Fair. Every year in September, we hold a Care Fair, and we do that throughout the district. So first year I did it, we were in Los Gatos. This last year, we were in Santa Cruz. Next year, we're going to Mont, to Morgan Hill. And those are areas where we're going to be presenting mental health resources to the community, and we also accept nominations to identify mental health heroes who work in Assembly District 28. So if you know of somebody in your community that's really going above and beyond to address our mental health crisis, please go on our website, nominate them for this recognition, and we'll be doing that event next September. I also do a program called Taking Care of Business. You know, our local small businesses are the backbone of our economy, and I like to do check-ins with them, so different areas of the district where there's a nice old downtown or a business area, I go in, talk to the local businesses, hear about what concerns they might have with, you know, state regulations and state issues, and be able to just let them know that we're here to assist. And also I do a little shopping when I'm out there as well. And we also do a program called Community Conversations, and that's a one-on-one where constituents get ten minutes of direct time to talk about whatever they want to talk about. We just held one this last week, and we were in Almanin, and then we were in Willow Blains, and we did two last week. And also, when it comes to nominations, March is Women's History Month, and that's the month where we're going to honor women, outstanding women in Assembly District 28. So again, we're taking nominations from the community, and again, we, we rotate that event around the district. So we've been in, we were in San Jose the first year, who was we last year?
Morrel.
We were in Morrel, that's right, I was blank. And then next year, we're doing it in Santa Cruz. So again, we'll be rotating that event around the district, but if you have a woman in your community that is really outstanding and deserving of this recognition, please go on our website and nominate them. And in 2023, so in addition to being the chair of the Assembly Elections Committee, I'm also the chair of the Select Committee on California's Mental Health Crisis. And the first year I was on that committee, we brought the hearing here to Los Gatos, and we had a hearing over at the Town Council Chambers. And then right now, we're planning a hearing on December 2nd in Sacramento, and it's going to be on the 988 number to get some feedback as far as how well that number is working and what maybe funding gaps or service gaps exist. And other programs that I have, I do a hike and trail with Gail. We led so many beautiful outdoor spaces in Assembly District 28, and I'd much rather be outside with constituents rather than sitting down having a cup of coffee. So we get outside and we walk around and we enjoy this beautiful landscape here in Assembly District 28. But I am available for coffee, too. Do plenty of those as well. And I do a program called Pause and Policy. We need to get a dog park in Los Gatos. And, but I've got a dog, my labradoodle Darwin, who's near and dear to my heart. I'm his emotional support human. And, and so it makes me feel less guilty when I'm on a weekend and we get to go to a dog park and basically have, you know, hours with constituents to be able to talk about whatever issues you might have. So the one thing I do hear about a lot from people in Monteserino is the eucalyptus trees. Yes, indeed. And this has been something we've been working on. I mean, we met for lunch with, of course, Liz Lawyer, and talked about what can be done to address this. It's a fire hazard. It's a concern for evacuation. And so we have been in constant communication with Caltrans. I think you're on those email chains and see that they are not very quick at responding, so we are continuing to put pressure on them. They did do some tree maintenance in the medium around State Route 9, including reducing the crowns and the canopies and lifting the lower hanging limbs. And Caltrans says they're monitoring the trees and they'll take appropriate action when necessary. And it is necessary now. Those trees need to come down. They are a fire hazard, and it's not safe for this community, so we will continue to press for that and push for that. And I hope next year, when I come back to give you another report, we're going to say those trees are gone and they've been replaced with something else that is not so flammable. So that's basically my report, and I'm happy to take any questions if you'd like, right?
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any questions for assemblywomen? I'll let others, yeah, first.
Nice to comment, as I said before. As the smallest community in your district, we appreciate the, the attention you are giving us in general and certainly the fire concerns on State Highway 9, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And I should introduce my team member here, Hannah Barnett. She's assigned to cover Monteserino, so she's your main point of contact.
Okay.
Yeah, I just also, hi, I'd like to thank you so much for coming and, and meeting with us and talking with us. And this is interesting information to know what you've been doing on behalf of our district. And it's just very much appreciated that you're taking the time to come here.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Me as well, and I will be glad to support a dog park in Los Gatos or Monteserino or somewhere in between.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Got a house over here. Yes. Uh, thank you very much for coming. So this is looking behind at what you did. What's your timeline going forward? And how does that work? What, what do you want to do next year?
So what are we doing next year? So one.
What are your, what are your priorities?
Yeah, so I, I do focus a lot on elections. I focus a lot on mental health. And I also do, we're looking at some education bills as well. And we've got a big one we're working on, which is the Monterey Bay, we call it MBSA. What is that, Santa Cruz? Monterey Bay area. It's like an open space district for, I need to memorize what this is called. For, it's not Santa Clara County, but it's Santa Cruz, Monterey, and San Benito County. You already have a wonderful open space district here that we do a lot of work with, and they sponsor a lot of my hikes that I do as well. And we want to do something similar for that coastal region, so we have a big bill going through this next year to propose that. So, so that's been happening, and I've got a couple of two-year bills that, meaning, two-year bills, basically, it just didn't have that extra push to get it to the governor. Or they, the administration sometimes shares concerns that they have with the bill, and it's in those last final days where there's not time to amend it, so we hold it. And then we work on those amendments during this interim time when I'm in the district, and then I'll come back and move those bills in January, and I've got a couple in that category that we're hoping to get through.
Pardon me, I don't know the way it works in Sacramento. But if there's another assembly member that is advocating for a bill, leading a bill, do other assembly members say I'm on side with this, or can you describe that a little bit? Because there's some things that I would like to talk to the appropriate assembly member about, but that's not on your agenda, the items I'm thinking of.
Yeah.
But if you could be, could you be an advocate to the person that's leading that? Could you describe that? Tell us about that?
Absolutely, absolutely. And when I introduce bills, like with this MBSA bill, the Regional Open Space District, I'm going to reach out to all the other members representing that region to get them on as co-authors when I introduce it. So when I introduce it, it will show the support from the region of the other, either state senators or state assembly members. And we go, I mean, there's thousands of bills that go through our, the process in Sacramento. And I have a member portfolio, and in that member portfolio, I can click on, when I'm called on to vote on a bill, I can click on it and see which constituents have called in in regards to this piece of legislation. And that often helps me to understand how many people like this bill or how many people don't like this bill. Sometimes you guys are split, and it's got even on both sides, but that often helps to get that community input regarding legislation. And then, and then when I'm doing other bills, too, I will ask for co-authors. I mean, I always, in January, it's Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and I've been the sponsor of that resolution. And so right now, we're working on fine tuning that language, and I'll be getting co-authors for that one as well. And then in September, we're only allowed two resolutions a year that we could present on the floor. So my second one I do is in September on Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. My family's been profoundly impacted by suicide. My husband of 25 years died by suicide in November 2018. And tomorrow's that seven-year anniversary, which is very difficult and fragile for us. But, you know, I think it's so important that we are talking about those issues and, and making sure people aware that there's help, that there's a 988 number, that, you know, mental health is real, and to remove that stigma so people can talk about it. But yes, and then if there's other legislation, lots of times I've been working with other authors, like they may produce a bill that I don't like or, or I have issues with. And oftentimes, I'll sit down with them and share my concerns about a bill. Sometimes they'll accept amendments, and I'll give them some amendments. And if they take my amendments, then I'm better off with the bill, but sometimes they take a couple, but not all of them. And then I'm not going to be able to support it, so. But yeah, we, we're talking to each other all the time about legislation, and especially when your bills go through the process. So you introduce your bill, it goes to rules to get assigned to a policy committee. Sometimes it gets assigned to two, sometimes three policy committees, and then you go and present them in those committees, and you get feedback from the members of that committee. You get ideas for amendments. Sometimes they don't want to pass it out until you take an amendment, so you work with them on that. And then if it's got a fiscal impact, it goes to what's called our Appropriations Committee. And then they will hold those bills that cost a lot of money later in the year till they find out where we're doing California-wise with our revenue and expenditures, because they don't want to pass more bills that cost too much money when we don't have the funds. So if you do, if you're lucky enough to get that bill out of appropriations and it goes to your assembly floor, and then you got to get off the floor of the assembly, either with majority vote or two-thirds, and then it goes to the Senate, and it does the same process over there. It goes to the Rules Committee, goes to their Senate Policy Committees, goes to the Senate Appropriations Committee, Senate floor. And then if there's amendments in the Senate, it comes back to the Assembly for concurrence. So there's lots of points in this process that you're scrambling, talking to the different members who are going to be voting on your measure, either in committee or on the floor. And I work my bills very hard, and I don't give up. And as you can tell by the bill that I've introduced three times, finally got that one through and done. And so, yeah, we just, that's how we work through the process.
Thank you for describing that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, I would like to thank you very much for coming by, and thank you for all of the work you do and all the help that you've given Monteserino, especially as you mentioned with our, our eucalyptus tree.
We're trying.
You know, we would definitely feel a lot better.
Yeah.
So thank you again.
Thank you so much. All right. Be well.
All right, you too. Okay, so we will move on to our. Written Communications. Do we have any written communications that we need to be aware of?
Nothing to say through.
Okay, very good. Then we're going to move to the consent calendar, and with any.
I'm quite oral, but that's okay. I could probably do it during consent. Um.
How about, let's go back to oral communications.
Okay.
Good evening, Council. As I was reading the draft ordinance, I noticed the section about appropriately labeling addresses on, on properties. And it reminded me of a conversation I think we had some time ago about curb identification programs that Riverside County uses, that Palisades uses, that identifies homes with a pool to help firefighters identify those homes, and it's simply putting a key next to the address number on the curb. So my question to Council is, or might ask, is really for us to consider implementing this, some kind of program. I don't think in the ordinance is the right place to do it at this point in time, but to have the discussion, figure out what that's going to look like so that we can go ahead and implement it, because I think that would be very, very helpful.
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
Oh, for the record, that was former Mayor Liz Lawrie.
Sorry.
All right, well, let's now go to the consent calendar. Would any members of the Council like to pull an item coming from the consent calendar? Seeing that, I will open it up for public comment. Seeing nobody in chambers, is there anybody online who would like to speak?
There's a race.
Okay. I'll make, I'll make a comment. I believe that we're talking about the adoption of ordinance number NS 243. That's the, the reach codes, or not the reach codes, I'm sorry, the building code. And I am wondering if we could. It's too late to change anything, but upon reflection, there's, there are requirements in other jurisdictions to consider heat pump, heat pumps for heating and cooling. And I'm just wondering if we could have a discussion of, of that in the new year. Well, should, should we pull this item then?
We can, because I, I probably have some information that might be helpful.
Okay, so why, why don't we go ahead and pull this item, and we'll discuss it separately. And then I would be looking for a motion to approve items two, three, and four.
So move.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that cases item number five, which is the adoption of ordinance number NS 248. And I guess we'll start with our city attorney.
Sure. So just to, in response to what I think Councilmember Megachuck's issue was, in, tonight is the second reading, so the ordinance was introduced in our prior meeting. And we did explain that there is a new process. The state has adopted Assembly Bill 130, which limits our ability, surprise, surprise, to make changes. And what they've done is they've.
Limits our ability to make changes to the building codes.
To the state building code, right. So the state adopts building codes. The local agencies are required to adopt those every three years. And we do have the authority to make changes to the extent that they affect a circumstance that exists in your jurisdiction related to weather, topography, those types of things. So in the past, those exceptions were used to adopt what we call the breach codes, among other things. Now, under this new Assembly Bill 130, the city is limited to those amendments that can be made. AB 130 requires that these changes that are being adopted this year will stay in effect until 2031, I believe. As applicable to residential. Yes, for residential codes, which is really what applies to us. It used to be every three years, the rules would change. Now, under this new Assembly Bill, there's a longer time period with the state's goal, obviously, of improving more housing. And so we have three, four circumstances under which we can make changes. One is that the changes are substantially equivalent to changes or modifications that were previously filed by the governing body of the city or county and went into effect as of September 30th, 2025. The changes or modifications relate to home hardening. The changes or modifications are necessary to implement a local code amendment that is adopted to align with the general plan approved on or before June 10th, 2025. And that permits mixed-fuel residential construction consistent with federal law while also incentivizing all-electric construction as part of an adopted greenhouse gas emissions reduction strategy. So I believe that the reach code that Councilmember Megachuck is interested in would fall under that. And unfortunately, the city does not have a, an adopted greenhouse gas emissions reduction strategy. Therefore, we're unable to adopt it under AB 130.
Okay, good. So we don't have a strategy. If we did have a strategy, has, has, have we already passed the deadline? Or could we then put something in place?
We have already passed the deadline. It has to be, we have to adopt these, these amendments and the state building codes by the end of December.
And if I could add also, under the AB 130, the greenhouse gas emissions reduction strategy would have been required to have been adopted on or before.
been required to have been adopted on or before June tenth of this year. So you had to already have what's more commonly referred to as a climate action plan.
Yeah, right, yes.
Yeah, so that would have had to have been adopted by June tenth of this year.
Now, is that could we adopt one in twenty twenty-six or
So we're we're
Like there there are no, there's no way to have a climate action plan.
Well, no, we can have one, but that won't enable you to make this change to these codes because they're going into effect January one, and they will be in effect until twenty thirty-one.
Six years.
Six years.
So everything, for lack of a better term, is frozen, carved in stone, cannot be changed.
Until the state legislature makes a change.
If they change, and you may want to talk to somebody.
There you go.
I I I just want to understand what the lay of the land is. I did not understand that before.
I'd like to see the problem, Councilmember Metecheck, is you're not being sarcastic enough. The state wants to push through a lot of housing. So anything municipalities do to try to make things better or safer in their community, if they see it as slowing down the uh construction, they're gonna outlaw it. So uh your comments were fine, but I just appreciate if you were a little more sarcastic.
Okay. I guess the state legislators, one, Monty Serino's your.
And unfortunately, uh, given the the temperature in Sacramento, uh this ain't the last time, I'm afraid.
Okay, so tha- thank you for the insight. I appreciate that.
We did spend a lot of time working on it, trying to figure out there are ways to to do all of the things that have been done in the past. And unfortunately, this was the one that we weren't able.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
So, oh, I I just wanted, so is there anything we can do though to um promote the benefits of some of these different technologies and strongly encourage a resident to incorporate them if when they when they take out a permit or as they're submitting a plan or something like that?
So we do have, um currently have expedited permit processing um for replacement appliances, so appliances, uh water heaters or furnaces. Um, so if if a homeowner would like to replace their water heater or furnace with an electric unit, we do allow those permits. Our issue them online in real time immediately without any staff involvement. So somebody gets their permit immediately. Um, that is a um recommendation of Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Uh, it's not a state law that we have to issue those types of permits that quickly. Um, but we do in order to um try to encourage and not make the permitting process any more difficult for an electric appliance than for a gas appliance. Um, we also have a existing policy that council has approved, actually a policy, and um then we updated our our zoning codes definition of new construction, which creates a threshold of when a remodel is considered a new construction based on how much of the existing structure remains. Um, and for new construction, the state um building codes does require electric readiness. Which means wherever a gas appliance is installed, there has to be electric um outlets and circuits available for a future replacement of that appliance to electric. So we do also require that on certain remodels that that cross that threshold, which is also a little above and beyond what um
It it, we have adopted.
So the um, the state building codes do require electric readiness for new construction.
Yes.
And with our um definition of what new construction is in our zoning code, it includes certain remodels that where um basically less than fifty percent of the existing exterior walls and roof remain. We would call that new construction.
So we've lowered the threshold, not raised the threshold.
Exactly.
Got it, that's what I.
And that has been in place for a few years now.
Yes.
So we will continue with that.
So so there's no more, we we used to use the term fifty plus one, so that doesn't exist anymore.
Correct, so our definition basically is if less than fifty percent of the exterior walls remain and less than fifty percent of the roof area remains. We would consider that to be new.
Okay, um, council member.
Well, if I had the uh city attorney's explanation, I uh would move that we adopt item five uh because I'm afraid we don't have any choice in the matter.
I'll second that. Okay, all in favor? What if somebody votes, what if we voted no?
And it wouldn't, it it wouldn't pass, and unless we did something at the next meeting um, January would be subject to the state code without amendments.
Interesting.
So they'll get you.
Thank you all very much. All right. So then that will take us to unfinished business and the new business and right into committee and commission reports. We'll start with Councilmember Megachuck.
Well, excuse me. Um, BTA, we had a an interesting meeting uh last week. And on the positive side, I think that uh should we have a engineer, city engineer working full-time, that there's money available that we need to pursue for our streets, roads, et cetera. Uh, bicycle paths, so um I'm looking forward to the new person joining. Uh, but we did have our meeting, uh the Stormwater Authority and Solid Waste, we had our meetings last week. Um, and uh there's going to be some changes with respect to uh rates in the future, as there always is. Um what Silicon Valley Clean Energy, this was very interesting. We had all, we had, I think, eleven or twelve people that were at Sunnydale City Hall. And one person had said that they were gonna attend remotely under whatever the Brown Act is this, and that person was gonna appear in Costa Rica. And they posted the public meeting low, public notice. And there was a problem and that person couldn't call in and couldn't say, it was totally no communication, no Zoom, no telephone. And because of that, the entire meeting had to be canceled. Because because there were all the people that were there lining up to speak, but they couldn't speak. So they couldn't.
There were actually people there?
But but the the issue is, is that if you have public, a notice, public notice and you are not there, then the meeting cannot proceed. Now, different different attorneys will interpret it different ways, but SBC they kind of go by the straight and narrow. So if you can imagine thirteen people that came to have a meeting and couldn't win.
Wow, yeah.
So anyways, I I'm sure that we then had an emergency or a special meeting, not an emergency, a special meeting on Friday afternoon that I attended, and we basically just passed it to the consent calendar. Because uh we couldn't, we couldn't continue uh because certain things have to be done in a open meeting or a regular meeting. So uh but that was an interesting learning, so should one of us try to attend remotely, you better make sure that you could attend because it could have consequences for during the meeting if you're publicly noticed.
Well, unlike former Mayor Huff, none of us is going to the Ukraine anytime soon, so probably be okay.
Uh, and then um there was no meeting in the Santa Clara County Recycling and Waste Reduction Commission. But what I will do also is I will send our city clerk uh some information documentation to attach to the minutes. Okay, so we've got that that detail. Thank you very much. Good. All right, council member Torn?
Yes, so I attended the um City Association Board of Directors meeting as well as Legislative Action Committee. Um, the most significant thing were uh was the election of executive committee members of the um association. So we spent a lot of time talking about that and the slate uh approved was uh includes past president Larry Klein. The new president is Tina Wallia from Saratoga. Uh, first VP is JR Fruin from Cupertino, second VP is Elliot Scazola from Campbell. And Secretary Treasurer is Rosemary Kamai from San Jose. So those uh were the, they those are the new executive committee members. And I was um, uh somebody uh asked me to announce that the county, uh the Santa Clara County Social Service Agency has a Veterans Service Office providing support for local veterans and a veterans crisis line. And I assume that we can um get this information perhaps on our website, so for people that wish to get this information. I can send this to you or send it to you via email. Um, and then to uh Thursday, while it's not a formal uh committee or commission, I'll be attending uh maybe a one with Vice Mayor and the Wildfire Advisory Group on Thursday in Los Gatos.
Okay, thanks very much. Council Vice Mayor Allen.
Yes, well, as Councilmember Thorne said, yes, uh Rock confirmed that we will have the meeting Thursday at the Los Gatos Library. Uh, and uh where we, it's a trice inning thing, just talking about fire prevention in general. Uh, nothing to do with the eucalyptus trees because of course none is in uh Los Gatos and Los Gatos was really behind setting up this committee. Uh, tomorrow I have uh the meeting of Sabaca. Uh, which was mentioned, well, at least that dogs were mentioned by our assembly person. And in past years, Mary and I had gotten pets from Sabaca and ten or twelve or fourteen years ago. I was again on the Sabaca board and it's just wonderful organization, so I'm looking forward to that. And uh that's my report.
Okay, council member Shannon?
Um, well, we had a West Valley Sanitation District meeting actually yesterday. It's normally on a Wednesday, but it got rescheduled. Um, kind of the highlights from that meeting is what I've already been reporting, that we're looking for a new district manager. Um, the process is moving right along. Um, our recruiter actually had quite a few candidates. Um, she narrowed it down to about five, and we're going to actually be interviewing four candidates um on December third and fourth, so it's kind of a two-day process. Um, and then we hope to make an offer to somebody, you know, shortly thereafter. Um, so I expect that we'll be getting a new district manager sometime soon. Um I also attended the T-PAC meeting. I'm the alternate for that. Um, and there's nothing really to highlight other than uh one of the big discussions at T-PAC was they're gonna bring in, um, it's like a three-million-dollar contract for this outside agency to come in and do all kinds of testing for all of the different um districts that feed into the San Jose wastewater. Um, they're gonna be reevaluating how they charge all the different districts and whether or not the metrics that they're using are are still accurate, and they're gonna be just reevaluating all that. So that's um that is gonna be happening, but it's a big deal for West Valley Sanitation District because it can very much alter what we pay currently, so they're definitely keeping their eye on what's happening with that. Um, and those are the only meetings I attended since we last met.
All right, thank you very much, and I um I actually uh was the in-house host for our youth commission meeting. And so thank you very much to our city clerk who um even though she was gone, still fired at the meeting and got it going. And uh we had a really good discussion. We talked about um, well, there was some continued excitement to work on getting the podcasts out. And so I've I've volunteered everybody here to be a possible interviewee. So especially since they they're really interested in uh documenting some of the history of Monty Serino and and all of the um different, or some of the the uh big commission members, they they all had a story. They had a neighbor or they knew somebody who they thought would be interesting to to interview, so I'm I'm very excited about that. And then we also, uh as you can see behind Councilmember Shannon, we have started our our food drive for the year, so please uh mention it to all of the folks in your social circles so that we are taking non-perishable goods. We will distribute it, distributing them on December the nineteenth. So and that I think will take us to our next item, which is council member comments. This time we'll start on the right side, my right, Councilmember Shannon.
Um, I don't have any comments today.
Anything, Vice Mayor?
Well, just on a personal note, uh I think your prayers have been effective. We had a meeting at Stanford Hospital yesterday and uh, the uh, Mary is cancer-free now, the things, the operations were successful, and so you get the support that you all have given us.
Okay. Councilmember Torn?
Um, uh, I I don't know if this fits into this comments, but um I'm once again privileged to be uh one of the broadcasters for the upcoming holiday parade on December sixth. Right, December sixth, with John Lochner, who um has been uh held, I think, just about every possible position in in the town of Los Gatos and in the community. So um we'll be, we'll be broadcasting together for, we've done this for, I don't know, seven, eight years now, so forward to a K-Cat TV, we'll be broadcasting it.
Yeah, all right, very good. Councilmember Megachuck?
Um, I will not be at the parade. I regret.
Are you Gina?
Yes. Our meeting is on the third, I believe on the fourth. Come back from the
Weather will be better there. Got billions of dollars, so make sure they spend it right.
Um, do, are you gonna cover a little bit about the um uh Tyler in your report?
No, go ahead.
Uh, Lisa, do you want to talk about that?
No, I'll let you talk about it.
Uh, I will say that we're making good progress and we're making lots of changes in a positive way. Uh, it's a bigger lift than we had expected. Um, and I will say that uh Lisa and I it's good to work together on the ad hoc committee because uh we both have different ideas, but together we come up with a much better solution and we're working closely with Diana. So this is uh taking a little while. Um, and uh I guess you didn't talk about the audit, the audit's gonna start in December. Um, and I'll just jump in with that as a teaser. It'll, it's interesting because the effective date of this transition to Tyler is July first. So it's kind of, we've got, we're gonna be audited as at June thirtieth. But it won't include the benefits of going forward. And as you know, we, for example, we haven't had any treasurer's reports. Um, but you know, to try to get a treasurer's report in for last May and June, it's like, that doesn't change anything, right? Our objective is to try to move forward as soon as we can get the actual numbers in and get that going to get the new budget in, but that will not happen before the end of the year, the end of the calendar year. But uh it's, it's been a lot of work and uh we're making quite a bit of progress. So I just thought, in the interest of being transparent and letting you know what's going on. So I just thought, in the interest of being transparent and letting you know what's going on, that would be good. So, do you want to add anything, Lisa?
Yeah, just on a positive note, it it has been taking a lot of extra time. I mean, Brian and I are on the phone all the time and working remotely and discussing things and then meeting with Diana. But it is moving in a positive direction. It is, you know, once we get there, it's gonna be all the things that we had hoped it would be, for the most part. Um, but it's kind of crunch time because we're trying to get all these transactions in, we're trying to get our six thirty numbers wrapped up. We're trying to get all the documentation um together that the auditors will need for the last year's audit. Um, so like I said, it's kind of a crunch time right now, but we're getting there, and then we will eventually have um you know, finance uh will be submitting reports for the council to look at.
Great. Is, are audits required, annual audits?
Okay, um, one piece of functionality that will be, that we're starting to see now, and it's there's some teething problems, but it's it's getting better, is that um if you city council will have the ability to look at the warrant list, and then if you wonder, gee, I wonder what this payment relates to, you should be able to drill down and actually see the invoice, which in terms of, you know, previously, you'd have to ask the city manager, you know, what's this? So it's a big workaround, this self-service thing, it's it works.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, so we'll have a better informed city council, is what you're saying.
Yes. Yeah, and uh you know, what city council will see is different than what the public will see, but they will have uh a better insight than what there is today, so. I think it's, I think it's all good.
Looking forward to seeing it. Okay, so um my only comment was after um running the meeting for the youth commission last week, uh we need a new computer or AV system. That computer is in bad shape. So, yes, that one there was pathetically slow and and um it's outdated too. There's definitely something better out there that we should put in in the racket. And I won't even mention the rack, but I'm going to mention the rack. It's gotta be cleaned in there. Okay, so that takes us to our city manager's report.
So uh the two items that I was gonna mention tonight have actually been mentioned already, so I will just reemphasize. The youth commission does have a canned food drive going on right now. Um, we do have a table out front, so donations can be dropped off at any time, whether the front office is open or not. Of course, if you want to drop off anything during business hours, we'd be happy to take it at the front desk. And then um the other thing I was gonna mention is also the Los Gatos Parade on December sixth, and um I think we have both the city council and the youth commission signed up, and as I understand, we will have the return of a bus.
Open. But you will not be in the parade?
I will be.
Announcing the parade.
Broadcasting with John Lochner, so I will wave, so as you go by. I'm trying to also announce as you go by.
I'm trying to convince Melissa, because you can come to the beginning of it and then just hop off the bus when we get to Main Street, then I suppose. We'll hop into the booth and.
You you know, um speaking of the parade again, what, one of the things I I think might be interesting is to ask one of our youth commission members to sit in on our on our broadcast and maybe say a few words and participate in some way.
Yeah.
Be a good experience.
Good idea.
So um we'll explore that.
Yep.
Does Los Gatos also have a youth commission?
Yes, they do, yeah. Yeah, they've never been terribly keen of working with us. They like their youth commission and their.
And they do it?
You guys, you guys do your thing and we'll do.
Unfortunately, remember, they're they're just a town, you know, a city.
Exactly. All right, so are there any ideas for future agenda items?
Yes.
Oh, we got one.
So I am really privileged to be a council member, and I tell people uh that I am a council member of Monty Sereno all the time, and then sometimes people say, so where is Monty Sereno? And um.
I I used to get a, what's a Monty Sereno?
I, you know, and I'm I'm very proud to tell them. And then um my wife and I were uh driving, you know, doing shopping errands this weekend, and we noticed the s- a new uh cat um statue. And I don't remember where it was, maybe on.
Oh, be careful what you're saying there now.
I know. I'm gonna say it because I'm new, so I'm gonna say it. Um, because.
Don't insult the cat.
I'm not saying anything about the cat. I'm just talking about us. And and that is, it would be nice if people knew when they were entering into Monty Sereno. And so which it performed. I don't know where that would be. I don't know if this was discussed before. Um, but we are a city and we should be recognized, and you should know when you're in our city and be proud of that, civic pride. So, you know, again, I I that's about as far as I've gone. I I have no idea what's involved or, you know, or where, or if it has been discussed before. But I I think it, I just think it would be a good idea.
So well, on Highway nine, there is a sign that says entering Monty Sereno. You're saying, you think.
Really?
Oh, yes. You know, down Highway nine?
Yeah.
Yes, I missed it.
It it says you're entering Monty Sereno, and he gives.
Which which way?
If you're coming from uh.
I guess.
Never, there is a sign, and it gives the population and the.
Is it, is it just a sign sign? It's not a.
It's like, it's just like your standard government issue.
Sign that you're entering any sign.
I I've lived there for many years, never saw it.
But let me.
So maybe that's part of the problem.
Well, maybe it's part of the orientation uh for new city council agents.
I I think this the council probably need to go clean it.
So.
Or right on the blackboard, I don't recognize the sign.
So let me just um. So um it sounds like you're suggesting to have an agenda item that would talk about ways to improve uh the visibility of Monty Sereno, and uh I would love to put that on there, and I will work with our city manager. It's a topic that comes up periodically. We actually had a, we've had a number of ideas over the years. We've had a uh one council member, he pushed, and that's why we have uh more distinctive street signs.
Was it Quail?
Yes, they used to be rusty old black and white signs, which really, really shouted, you know, rural Monty Sereno, but now they're ultra-modern. In fact, they've already been replaced once because the first batch was not named properly. Um, but there's also been other ideas. Uh we had one council member who thought a a nice black marble monolith that had Monty Sereno etched into it would be kind of neat, so. But yes, we will get an agenda item and talk about some other ideas.
Well, I'm gonna go back to Brian's point, where you know, the uh Los Gatos has the cat. So if you could just tell us what a Monty Sereno is, we could, you know, we're all.
It's a whale.
Stash it's a quail.
Right there.
Okay. So we could, we could, we gotta have our.
I think that would be.
We can have like an attack coil coming in with the tweens over, and it's and it's and it's power lines out.
Say, Madam City Clerk, see what happens when you don't turn off the microphones and.
And I and I also, I also think that, you know.
All right.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want the um the city to pay. I I think it could be funded by private funds too.
All right. So let's let's wrap it up. Councilmember Mecha Chuck, looks like.
I I I was just gonna say, I thought you could see the block cameras when you entered or left Monty Sereno. Sorry.
That is true, dear. Okay, so with that, I will adjourn this meeting and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And we will see you on December the second.